Okay. Okay, good evening. I will open a meeting to the public at this time. You can address the board on any topic you wish. I will have another opportunity at the end of the meeting to address the board again.
Am I it?
Identify yourself for the clerk and...
All right, Tom Berlani.
Yeah.
Can I ask what's being done with the sign in front? It's gonna look really nice.
What, oh, you mean out in the...
Uh, yeah.
That's the gateway.
That's for the bicycle.
Bicycle gateway that New York is putting in.
The sign, you guys fixing the sign in the front, the, your LED?
By the street there?
The state is putting a thing for the bike path for the bicycles to come. I believe there's gonna be wat- water, air.
Water, yeah, water and air and bike racks and...
And places where they can sit, bike racks.
But I mean your digital sign outside of the rec center here. It looks like you're gonna put flowers around there.
That's what the trails say.
That's what we're talking about, yeah.
That's, okay, I just wanted to say that looks really nice. It's gonna li- it looks like it's gonna look very, very nice.
Yeah, they're putting those up all over the state, but we're on the map. I think there's four on the whole state map. When you bring it up on a computer, Ross's Point's the first one.
Oh, wow, wonderful. I just had one other question tonight. I am concerned about the Pfizer plant and all the rubble that they're creating through the crushing of all the rocks. And I'm wondering if air samples are being taken every day. Under Industrial Code 56, there should be five air samples per day. You have one sprinkler system which is up there, which in my opinion is inadequate. These cranes or these tractors, these, they're constantly working on that. You're in front of a school and Ross's Point is not a very big area. And there's a lot of people concerned about their health right now because of that building, of all the destruction, all the demolition that's going on.
The village isn't doing anything, but I can contact tomorrow, contact DEC, what they're monitoring on it because they're the lead agency on that.
Is nothing, is nothing available to the public?
What would you mean?
Well, I, you know, I cut rid of my shed in the back and I had to do a, you know, I supplied you with a report, an asbestos report. Is there no asbestos, I mean, this is, this is a huge project. I mean, if, with my little house in the back of my, my restaurant, I had to get an asbestos report?
Well, okay.
Well, I mean, this is a huge project, which, and on top of that, I mean, they're, they're crushing all the stone, which is creating so much, so much dust. And, you know, there should be, according to Industrial Code 56, which is the code which applies to huge projects like that, there should be five air samples per day and there should be, in addition to that, I would say more than one sprinkler system going on.
I thought they had two or three up there.
Okay.
For the sprinklers.
I'm just curious to know what, what...
I think the difference is, in your case, yours, Raj, that would come under the code enforcement officer for the village, monitoring residential demo or something like that. I don't know, John, what's your role in the industrial?
They submitted a survey, they took about a two-year survey on this where they took these buildings down. I have a book up on my desk up there, it's probably over a thousand pages long. Each building is broke down individually as to what was in the building and what they took out. I know you weren't up there, but they went through each building individually. The guys, even the building supervisor can testify, they took out all the stuff in there that was gonna be hazardous. They did the asbestos survey for every building. They submitted this report to the DEC and that's what they're working on. If you'd like to see it, you can go to my office anytime.
Okay.
I know they did the asbestos removal, 'cause I remember when they did that this winter on the last buildings over by the school. The air samples and things like that, definitely like Tom said, would be the DEC, 'cause they're supposed to be monitoring the site, not the village.
Isn't that the Labor Department instead, rather than the DEC, Department of...
All right.
It's gotta be DEC.
Okay.
Okay, so, did I answer your question?
No, it does not, 'cause I really do, I really am concerned about, about the health of people in the village and there should be air samples taken pretty much every single day with all of this going on and those air samples should be provided to you, in my opinion, so that you are aware of what kind of air we are breathing in here in the village. And this is a huge project.
Hey, I'll tell you what, I will ask the code enforcement officer to make a couple phone calls tomorrow and see if anybody is monitoring it from DEC. Can you do that, John?
I'll tell you what, I'll be out of town. I'm gonna ask Brian to go up and check with Mr. Nichols up there.
Right, okay.
Or maybe Trusty Arno, 'cause he knows those guys personally, and give us some kind of a statement on that.
Yeah.
Can you do that, Ben? I would do it, but am I gonna be here?
All right, thank you. Anything else? Okay, minutes of the September 3 meeting. Any errors or missions?
I make a motion, we accept them. Second?
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, bills? Are there any additions to the bills other than the supplemental addition I already got?
No, just that supplemental page I passed out.
Yeah, okay. Any comments on the bills from the board?
I have just one curious question. Page five, where are we? Big fans to Chamberlain Telephone.
Yeah.
Why would the Welcome Center telephone be so expensive when no one is ever there?
Because it includes the security system as well.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I didn't mean the word expensive, it was just, it's spelled a little trouble what some of the others are.
Yeah, junk sound.
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome.
Make a motion to pay the bills, is...
A second.
Okay, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Bills are paid, okay, correspondence?
There is none this evening.
Okay. Reports from Mayor and the trustee. First thing I'm gonna do is this addendum to the village procurement policy. I'd like to add the following paragraph into it and it deals with when an employee is no longer employed by the village through either retirement or whatever, that they are taken off the procurement list of authorized village personnel and allowed to buy things for the village. Upon termination, resignation, or retirement from the village of Ross's Point, an employee designated to have purchasing authority in accordance with the village of Ross's Point procurement policy will no longer have purchasing authority. The effective date will be the date of termination, resignation, or retirement. The accounting department will notify the appropriate vendors when said employee separates from the village of Ross's Point. And I move that to the floor.
I'll make a motion to accept this.
A second?
Yep.
Okay, so, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none? All right, thank you.
Was that paper fact today?
Yes.
Adopted on today?
Today or tomorrow, whenever she files it.
I think today.
Today?
Okay, I'd like to request an executive session to discuss issues pursuant to Taylor Law.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, now I'd like to request a second executive session to discuss employment history of a particular employee.
Second now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, changes in procurement policy. Do we still have to delete the other two that, we've adopted this or is this covered? The two people that were gonna take off separately or is...
This will cover it.
This covers it, okay. Okay. Let's see here. Just a pair with me a minute here. Okay, update on the Northern Order Regional Commission grant for $500,000. What do we have on that, Donna?
We are, we're waiting to move forward on bread and waste and on the water study to see what we're gonna need for property.
Okay.
So we're just waiting for the final water study from Barton and Judas.
Okay, from Barton and Judas, waiting to see what...
We have a meeting scheduled for Friday.
Yes.
Yeah, so we should know by then.
Okay. Eligibility list for the Recreation Facility Manager, that position's been vacant for about a month now. I think we need to take no action on the eligibility list and advertise, authorize the, the clerk to advertise for a new hire provisional appointment. How does the board feel about that?
Yeah, I think we need, we definitely need somebody here.
We need to advertise anyway.
Yeah.
This is, my, my motion is to...
To advertise?
Authorize the clerk to advertise. One second now. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. I believe that's, that's all I have right now. Trusty Arno?
All right, we have a letter from Dodger Memorial Library. Ross Point Dodger Memorial Library would like to appoint Linda Hiller to the position of custodian for the library. Her start date will be September 16th, 2019. James Drew.
Okay, does that require any action on us or is that...
No, no, just a memo just to let us know.
She's already approved the civil service.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we don't require any action from us?
And I would do a motion in a second, just to approve it.
Okay, you wanna make that as a motion, approve that?
I'd make that as a motion, yeah.
And a second?
Second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, is she replacing someone there now or is this new?
Sarah has moved out of state.
Okay. All right, and I'd like to ask Mr. Cooper if he sent a letter to the guy on Holmes and Meyer building? Did you send him a letter?
No, I didn't.
Oh.
On what, what were you referring to her?
On the cutting of the shrubs in front of his...
I spoke to the maintenance man there. He said he was gonna take her.
Oh, okay, and I see on State Street side too, all the, a lot of the bushes are out hanging over the sidewalk.
Okay, that, I'll tell you what, that was last week after the meeting.
Yeah.
I'll be back in the village on Friday morning. I'll see if I can give him another...
Okay.
Okay, and if I don't get any results in there, but then of course I will send the letter.
Okay.
He said it was no problem, just like that, be no problem.
All right, and also, I was coming through the village today and I seen where Brian's apartment building was, right next to Sandy's Deli. Up on the second floor, there's three or four rungs that's out. I don't know if that's up to you to fix that or to tell him to fix that, 'cause if, if there's a small kid up there or something like that, he could fall over or fall through it.
Yeah, there's probably half a dozen or more missing. Okay, let's see here. I'll call Scott.
Wouldn't happen when Lawrence owned the place, say that.
And there's, there's a couple that's broken too.
They look like they're kicked out.
Yeah. All right, Trusty Dart?
Hi, nothing to do.
Oh, I'm sorry, is that all, Ben? Yeah, that's it, yeah. Okay, Trusty Dart?
Nothing to do.
Okay, Trusty Menard?
Just one thing, Brian, when we pay him? This week, next week?
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Well, they're supposed to move their equipment here tomorrow and I don't know if they're gonna start tomorrow afternoon, possibly. But it should be done by Friday.
Okay, Trusty?
Thank you. That's all I have.
Trusty Gagley?
A couple things. Brian, do you know when the fall cleanup will be?
The week before Halloween. That we have every year.
Basically last week in October then, right?
Yeah.
The full week.
Thirty-first is the last day, so the week prior to that, yeah.
Before Halloween.
Okay. And do we, I got people asking about neighborhood watch program with all the stuff going on at the...
There is one, started already. Mrs. Hall's in charge of that end up there. You go talk to her.
Ms. Hall?
Mrs. Hall, lives right on, well, not on the corner of Smith and Lake, but the next house over.
On the corner of Beacon Heights and stuff?
No, on Lake Street. On Lake Street. Next to Steve Prunable, the next one north.
The one, the roof? That she just had replaced?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, she's in charge of the neighborhood watch up that area or whatever. Oh yeah, she has been for five years already.
People asking, my wife at the soccer game.
Yeah, if you go talk to her, she'll, she'll talk, she'll talk to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I have for the board.
Hey, thank you. Other reports? Let's see, do you have anything, Donna?
I, the only thing I have is Coria Staffing had a job fair near last week. It was short notice. There's several, several employers in Ross's Point that are desperately needing help and they're having difficulty finding people. Coria Staffing was tasked with trying to help them, so they had a job fair near. They didn't have a lot of people, but they were very pleased with the turnout that they did have and they're asking if at some point in the future that they could have it again.
Yeah, by all means. It looked like the parking lot was about two-thirds full. When I drove by, it was a surprising large turnout.
So they, they just wanted to thank the board. That's all I have.
Mrs. Pelkey, anything from the Treasures Department?
I have nothing.
Mr. Pelkey?
Yes, like Trusty and I were saying, asked about, is the blacktop just gonna start tomorrow? Should be done by Friday. The only other thing I have is, we've had a problem on this pipeline that goes from the north end pump station up to the main plant. We had three leaks in it. We had two last June that came out of the ground. We had one last fall by the leak bend. So there's a section of pipe there that is in question. Now, it was put in new when they built the sewer plant. We don't know if it's a failure of maybe a skid of pipe that was bad that they put in that ground in that section or we don't know if the ledge is eating the bottom of the pipe out, but the pipe had very deteriorated. What I like to do, and we've been doing a lot of research on footages and size of pipe and what to put back in there and what we're looking to do is replace that pipe from the edge of the tarmac where the gas pumps are up to the sewer plant gate. What we would do is put 900 feet of plastic pipe in with the mechanical joints and we would have to rent the machine because it has to be done pretty quickly. 'Cause that pipe, that pit fills up at the north end, it has to pump it up to the main plant. So we're gonna lay the new pipe right alongside the old one, mechanical joints, put them back together, and abandon the other one. So what I like to do is when our send comes back and we find out if we have the monies in the sewer fund to do this, I like to order the pipe and do the project the first week of December when the flows are done. 'Cause we've been doing a lot of testing to see how long we can go without that pump station running to find out exactly our window of time to put, to cut this new pipe into the old one and eliminate that section. 'Cause we feel it's just that one section that we're having a problem with. Because the pipeline was put in from the north end pump station all the way up to the plant and the only place we're having the problem is from the leak bend to the ditch line before the gate.
Like about 100 feet or so of it?
Yeah, but we would like to replace it right from the tarmac. Because a few years ago, we did some storm drains up there and we dug and we found the old outfall line. They put those two lines in at the same time.
Yeah.
Just beyond the gas pumps, we dug down, we cut a hole in that and we tapped it for a storm drain. That pipe looked like the day that they put it in. So like I said, I, we don't know if it was a bad bundle of pipe that they put in the ground or if it's the slate or the ledge is, is wearing, wearing the pipe down.
We have a, can we get a, we have a grant application in the works now and is it gonna be open in October?
We should hear this fall.
Yeah, I think you said...
The application has already been submitted.
Yeah.
So we're just waiting to hear. They haven't announced any awards yet.
I, I thought you said they were gonna announce them around like October 26th or something or that was a deadline they had to be in for something?
I was told this fall that they were gonna do it, so it could be anytime.
We've, we've been on top of this and we've been submitting the paperwork.
Well, we have, we have roughly about $15,000 worth of material and $2,000 to rent the excavator for three days. 'Cause we would use a large excavator rather than our little backhoe's slinging and maneuvering. 'Cause the pipes are 20 foot long and they weigh about 400 pounds deep to also put them in the hole.
Are you using, you gonna use PVC this time?
Yes, C900 water line. The thick blue water line that we usually use and then embed it in sand.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
So you're talking, what I was wondering is if we had the money available, it's about, you know, $17,000 project.
You could probably do that, order it right now, but wait. Let me check and see, let me check tomorrow and the next day on the grant status if that will screw us up if we do it that way or not. Because we're gonna know in a couple of weeks, one way or the other, the money.
Well, what my concern is, is our window of opportunity to do this project is in December when the flows are low and that's the time we can shut the pumps down the longest.
Well, let me say this, okay. I would say that we could probably do the job financially in-house if we had to. And so if we get to the point where it's like December and we haven't heard anything on a grant or they denied us, we can still go ahead and do it. But if the grant comes through, that might even include having a contractor put it in. I don't know what he actually submitted. I think that was the way they were gonna go get Luck Brothers or somebody to come and put it right in. But that might mean he's gotta go out to bid and all that stuff too, so I don't know. But I, you know, so, but we'll know, we should know one way or another on the grant within a few weeks.
How long is it gonna take you to order material, Brian?
I could have the materials in the yard in a week.
Yeah, that's, you know, we got, we got plenty of time. I would say, I would say we oughta know something one way or the other. Either we're gonna do it or we're gonna do the grant, do it by November 1st. And that gives you plenty of time to order stuff and do it if you have to do it.
Yeah, if we can know by November 1st so I can get the order in and get all the material here in the yard and line up the excavator, we would rent it from Taylor Rental and Hoard United and have it delivered to our yard and it'd be about a three-day project.
It'll open. Yeah.
Well, it's...
Never know when you dig in the ground.
We put water line, I mean, we, we...
There's a lot of slate up there.
Yeah, we've done orders, yes.
And what are you thinking in terms of, long as we're talking about sewer lines, what about the one for this building?
This one here is gonna be done after the blacktopping.
Okay.
It's on the schedule for when our blacktop and where our roads are done, we're gonna come through the sewer line and get this one done so it has time to settle, so we can get this blacktop. We'll do that in-house. We repaired the fire hydrant up at the tower today, so we're trying to get these little projects done before the county comes.
When will the blacktopping be for this after, next year?
This, we'll just fill it back in ourselves, the way we usually just patchwork pave.
Right.
It's not a machine. We just send a truck down, we get eight tons at a time, we spread it out and we roll it in two different lists. But eventually this whole parking lot should be done.
Right. Yeah, 'cause Mr. Schindler was asking me if he was gonna strip this again this year or... Well, we're gonna pave it, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna pave it. There's no sense of painting it, it's paved.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I told him.
And we'll have to see how the budget comes out this year, you know, you put it in budget, I'm sort of thing. Well, we also, we don't know what's going on with it yet on the rest of the parking lot that's coming in with this grant money, you know, on the side here, you know, you're gonna be extending that and...
Yeah.
But we'll be in a better... Well, it won't be paved this year, let me put it that way. It's gonna be next year, so we'll know, this winter we'll know what we're doing. Right. Okay. Library?
Hello. Well, we've finished up for the summer, summer program. We had 164 little kiddies visit over the summer. Our farmer's market did great this year. We had 870 visits at the farmer's market. August, we had over, slightly over 1,100 people in the library for programs and library, which as far as I know is a record for library attendance. So things are going very well.
Very good.
Good.
Very good. Mr. Cooper?
Things are looking pretty good. I'm gonna be gone for the next three days, I explained to everybody.
You have a training thing?
Huh?
Another one, training things?
Yeah, well, there's four more. And I told the girls over there, if there's anything that comes in, they're gonna let me do it right today so I can come down in the evening if something needs a permit or something when I come back in from home.
Okay.
If anybody needs me anytime, you'll write down my home number.
Okay. Okay. I have one other thing I missed here on my list here. I'd like to know what the board wants to do with the most on the coast. Craft show that we're having at the end of next week, like the 27th, is it?
Twenty.
28th? As you know, that was set up the last two years by Mr. Peters and Ms. Shields and they're not here anymore. And we gotta figure out how we're gonna set this thing up and who's gonna do it and who's gonna run it.
Well, if I was here, I'd do it, but I'm gonna be in Germany, I'm leaving the 24th.
That's a pretty good excuse.
Already got my plane ticket.
Yeah, that's a good excuse.
Well, it shouldn't be too hard, I don't imagine, I mean, tape off the...
Yeah, you know, like the two guys that are here don't know how, they've never seen it before, I don't think. Was Kevin here last week?
Well, just, just measure out 10 foot, 10 foot, 10 foot, 10 foot. Everybody gets a 10-foot space, right?
I've never seen the layout before, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I've never seen it either, but that's what they usually do.
You have to assign the spots, somebody has to be here to collect the money.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, yeah. I mean, I would've done it if I was gonna be here, but, and to tape off the spots out there on, on the floor is nothing new. I mean, I wouldn't say it'd be a...
It's organizing it, somebody has to organize it and make sure that it's done properly and contact the vendors to let them know where their spots are gonna be. Be here the day the food vendor pushed for more advertising this last couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm not gonna be here, so... Jamie, you interested in this? I'm working it two days before. Tom?
I don't know. I'd be willing to help out, but I...
Well, you haven't seen it either, probably.
No, I haven't seen it, I'm just, I'm just not confident enough to feel to run it, but I'd help out.
Did they, we have three rec employees, right? There's two right now.
One's out.
One's out sick. And he was the one that was gonna tape out the spots.
They're usually 10 by 10.
I can help, I mean, I don't know about running it, but yeah.
'Cause I'm not gonna be here that weekend either, I'm gonna be in Pennsylvania.
What weekend is it?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth?
Twenty eighth, last one of the month.
It's just the one day or is it two?
Vendors come in the day before until 4 o'clock and they can set up. And then they're here to set up in the morning.
All day Saturday?
All day Saturday. And somebody needs to contact the radio station that they had last year and see if they'd be willing to come back.
Like WOKO or...
It was The Moose.
The Moose? The Moose don't have anybody anymore.
They don't?
No. No.
Still 8.5 or 8.9, I'm sure one of them were.
I don't know.
Yeah, Herman, Herman Downs, he's, he went to another radio station.
Could you look into that aspect for us, Jamie?
The radio station?
Yeah.
Take care of that?
Prevent it, you know?
Or work with Van...
Yeah, Herman, Herman, he doesn't do it anymore unless he, he does it for another radio station. I can find out, I can give him a call and stuff. And I'll let Jamie know or you know.
They could come help the week before. I gotta work Thursday, Friday, so in a week I'll set it up.
Yeah, see, the problem is they get the pickleball stuff up in there until...
Wednesday.
Wednesday, and that only gives us Thursday to set it up, but I think we maybe could get Mrs. Laterno to help maybe tape off.
We did it in the day last year, we did it on Friday.
Yeah. And she might, she might be willing to help on that, I don't know, I'll have to ask her.
So you, you were, you helped set it last year? So you've got knowledge, we can pick your brain? your brain?
I, I'm not their supervisor, so I can't direct them to do anything.
Right.
But I have all the, the paperwork.
Well, let them do what they wanna do, and we could come down, well, when, when is that, the twenty-seventh?
The twenty-eighth. The twenty-seventh, some of the vendors will be coming in.
Oh, well, I, I'll be here, because I'll, I'll be down on the twenty-fourth, so, but I was gonna say, how come we can't tape that off right now? Because the pickleball's there. Yeah, well, pickleball, they're, they're just a little- Which tape? Do you look out there? It's, it's all taped on the floor. Oh, yeah. Where the pickle, it's like, looks like a tennis court. Yeah. On, on the floor, it's all taped all over the place. But if we used a different colored tape? Well, you'd have to go over the pickleball tape, I don't know. I mean, take a look, and it's-
So, they do that with gym, where they got volleyball and they have basketball courts, I don't know which way, like, yeah, different color.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, you could use different colored tape. I think she's gonna have it all pulled up Wednesday, you know, the day before, so that gives you like Thursday to tape it all off.
Is there, uh, last year's maps of how the vendors were set up?
Then we know how to-
Give that to the rec we have?
Uh, we have, um, at least thirty. I haven't gone through the applications, but there's at least thirty. And there's some want electricity, some want tables, that have to be set up in a certain spot. Couple of them wanna be where they were last year. Um, so I have the layout, but not where they are. But I have a map of how to lay, how to put them out there, but.
Okay, because that could be given to the rec guys, and they, they need hours to tape off courts to make it maps to, to that.
Mm-hmm. But yeah, I mean- And we'll have to, we'll have to sign something, we're overtime on Saturday, right?
There's two scheduled that day. Jess had already scheduled two people. She scheduled, um, Aaron and Kevin, so now, um, that schedule may have to be altered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, I'd ask the board to assist on this as much as you can, because we're in kind of a tight situation because of what's going on here. But, um, okay. Um, last thing I have, which I should've had earlier, but I didn't have on my list, I, I'd like to increase the hours of, um, Amy Lemieux, who's a, um, senior typist, twenty hours a week, to nine additional hours, which will still keep, she's agreed to this. And it'll keep her under, it's still with the part-time work, so she won't have benefits. And this nine hours will allow her to assist in the clerical work of the ice rink, like the, the ice time scheduling and the helping doing the schedule for when the workers are working to, so they're there when the ice is, you know, when, when they're needed. You know, it's night and weekends and all that kinda stuff. And she's agreed to do that too. So, and the money will come from, uh, money we haven't spent on Jessica's position, which is still funded.
Right.
So, I would put that in a motion, um, to extend her nine hours, like a second.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, toast. Okay. Thank you. Now, uh, last one, open, meeting open to the public?
Yes, please.
Mr. Public.
Please, if I may. Uh, a few weeks ago, I, I had asked you, I actually brought up a few issues.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, one was, um, concerning a hotel in the area. And, uh, you had told me that there was a study that was done years ago concerning bringing in a hotel. I, I did speak to Melissa McManus concerning that study.
Mm-hmm.
She told me that, that study that was done was a very minor study. It was almost insignificant.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, almost like you put tubes against the road and, and look at traffic.
Yeah.
Please, my, my question is, does the village have any intention of doing another study with the town of Champlain to bring in a hotel into the city? It might not be a concern to you. It's a concern to me, it's a concern about-
It's not that it's not a concern to us. It's not that it's not a concern to us. I think everyone on the board would like to see a motel come in, um-
So, how are you address, I, I, really, how are you addressing it? Are you going to do another study? Are you going to bring in someone to do the study? And, and, and the question is when? And, and is it, is it a pressing matter to you, or is it just not?
Tom, were you in with, um, Ron?
Ron.
When, did, when did you do that? Did he do the study, or you just looked at the study that was there before?
Ron looked at the study that was done before. I hadn't seen it.
My, my understanding through talking to, speaking with Melissa McManus, is that was, it was a very minor study. There was nothing significant done about a study bringing in a hotel around this area. And as I said the last time, and, and, please, there's, there's a lot of hidden activity that is going on here, that, that these studies just don't look at. Um, is there any intent of doing another study? It, for, for the sake of increasing the economic activity around this area, I mean, which, which we badly need? Uh, and as I said earlier, there's so many people that are asking for a hotel. And, and, and you would not be aware of that, because they're all coming to me through the restaurant, because there's so many people coming in, and so many people looking for a place to stay. And in the winter months, your bed and breakfasts are closed. And there's still a lot of economic activity going on in, during that time. Uh, there was a gentleman that came in, and I, I apologize, I don't know all the names of, of the town councillors. There was someone that came in from the town of Champlain, I wanna say about, uh, a week ago, with Bob McDonald, who's the director of your golf course. Um, and they were talking about, uh, he had actually, I had brought this issue up with him, and they were saying that they were looking at a hotel in the town of Champlain. Have you heard of anything?
They haven't approached us on it.
They have not?
The town has not, reached out to us and told us.
Do you guys, just curious, I mean, does the village, I mean, we are part of the town of Champlain, right?
You would hardly know that.
Really?
Yeah.
Um, because, I mean, I pay a lot of money to the town of Champlain.
Oh, yeah. We, we, we all do. We were very aware of that, it's a kind of a sore spot.
I know a couple of the board members up there, and nobody's said anything about-
That's, that's pretty sad. I mean, I, you know, even if the hotel is not in the village of Rouse's Point, I mean, being part of the town of Champlain, if there were a hotel inside the town of Champlain, that would pretty much do it. We're not far away. I don't wanna send my, I don't wanna send my clients to Plattsburgh. I wanna bring Plattsburgh here.
What I can do is, I'll, I'll try to contact Gary Douglas. He's the, the head of the Chamber of Commerce for Clinton County.
Yes.
He's very successful. He's the one that's the moving force behind all this industrial development in Plattsburgh. You know, he's right on top of that. And see if he would have any-
You know, I'm not convinced that Plattsburgh has your interest in it. I'm just, I'm glad for what's-
He might know somebody that can do the study for us.
There's no Chamber of Commerce in Rouse's Point or the town of Champlain here. And the Chamber of Commerce are typically composed of members of the businesses in the town or the village. And they have seen fit not to have a Chamber of Commerce. So, when something like this comes up- They used to have one. They used to have one, yeah, they did. And they had the Kiwanis Club and the, all those different service organizations.
I mean, towns, towns have, yeah, I mean, towns-
And then they just don't have them. There's just, the interest has dropped off over the years, and it's, it's very difficult. Uh, the last time that I know of that the village board actually got involved in attracting a business was when trustee Jefferson got the Save-A-Lot in here. Remember, that was his, when he first got on the board as a trustee, that was his big thing, was the Grand Union had closed, we had no supermarket.
Right.
And he got petitions and everything else, and he got a, a supermarket. And then, of course, you know, that wasn't what happened with that, with Price Shopper thing.
Well, I know what happened with that one.
Yeah.
Here with Price Shopper and with the Grand, it was the Grand Union here, I think, in the village.
No, it was Save-A-Lot after the, the Grand Union had gone out of business.
Oh, okay, okay.
And the, the owner of that building owns the one in Champlain. And the deal was, close this one if you want that one.
Wow. So, please, I'm asking you again, uh, is there, you know, uh, will you pursue something as far as the study's concerned?
Well, I, I, I would, um-
Like you said, we'll talk to Gary Douglas. Maybe he knows somebody that can do a study for us. You know, I mean, they must do studies in Plattsburgh, so, I mean, somebody must have done them at some point in time.
And the other-
I agree with you that Plattsburgh has no interest in Rouse's Point or Champlain.
No, they, they do not. They, they don't.
But he has to know professional people-
Right.
That do these studies.
And the other one I'll contact is, uh, Harry McManus, who's the area, our Area One county legislator, and he's also the chairman of Clinton County Legislature. He's, he's getting termed out, he'll be out of office pretty soon. I don't know, is it the end of the year or the, November? November.
November.
But he at least would know who to contact, and, uh, I'll ask him if he can guide us. On your side, if, if you'd be interested in forming up, getting a, a-
I am, just let me know, I'm more than interested.
No, I mean, and if you can get a, a, a Chamber of Commerce going again, reactivate that, and they make a petition, or they ask the village to do things that the village can do, we will. You know, we'll, you know, if they get somebody to come in, we'll hook them up with water, we'll do what, you know, what they need. But it's not really our area of knowledge or expertise to get into this stuff. I mean-
It's just, it's important for the village.
I think it's very-
And it's important for, you know, I'm, I'm just a business owner.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm not a politician. I don't know how to interact politically. I'm just, I'm a business person that really wants to see this village go in a direction that's, that's different. Um-
I mean, all of us on this board are, we're used to having a nice hotel and a nice restaurant where the anchorage was. You know, for years, all our lives it was there, and then all of a sudden, it's just gone, and it's just been-
Understood, yeah.
He's had two or three chances, or two or three requests, that he's tried to rebuild